Welcome, Mayor, to the Centerville City Council meeting being held here on July 1st. Welcome to July and may your rest of the week be safe and as you celebrate the independence of this great country. We thank staff that's here, we thank members of the public that are here. We want to make sure that we can conduct the meeting, so we'll do a roll call starting at the end.
Meacham present.
Summerhays present.
Heeman present.
Hurst present.
Plummer present.
Thank you. All five members of the city council are present today, so thank you for being here. First thing is a legislative prayer of thought, and that is by myself, Mayor Clark Wilkinson, and I will give a prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're very grateful for this opportunity to gather. We're thankful for this July 1st, we're thankful for what's upcoming this week. Help us on the 4th of July that we may remember the Declaration of Independence that was signed to give, to start the formation of our new country, to give us the rights and freedoms that we enjoy, followed further by other documents. We're grateful for thy hand, we're thankful in all that we do. Bless us that we can be able to be good listeners tonight and be not quick to judge, and that we may be able to be civil as well, too. We're thankful for all the protections that we enjoy in this great city-state-county and country. And help us that we may be able to be of clear mind and clear thought, and as we say in the name of the Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. I would ask Councilman Plummer to lead us in our pledge tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The first thing we have is the open session. This is for every council meeting, we have an open session. This is where any members of the public welcome to come forward to comment on things that might be on their minds. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, you identify who you are and your city of residence for the record. Now, I should point out that there are some agenda items where we will be opening it up for discussion, so you need not come forward for those agenda discussions. And that's specifically, we have a public hearing matter on a zoning code text amendment, body art facilities and permanent cosmetics, so that will be a public hearing matter where the public will be able to comment on that, so you do not come forward if you're going to comment on that. But anything else, I don't see any other public hearings, anything else, please come forward and, like I said, identify who you are, what city you're from, if there's anything else that might be on your mind. Seeing nobody coming forth or nobody online for the open session, we will move to our business items section of our agenda, and the first thing on the business items is the public hearing matter. This is a matter that our planning commission addressed quite significantly after the city council had a public hearing in November and February on an application that was submitted in this field. Our public, our planning commission has worked diligently on this, those records are all made available for the public. They started working on it on March 12th, and they've done a wonderful job and worked really hard at it. And part of what we have coming forward to us tonight is from all the hard work that the planning commission has done and put in on that regard. But involved in those discussions from the staff was Mike Aggett, and he's come forward to talk a little bit about, about, summarize what we have in front of us here. So, Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Happy to be here. Yeah, as you stated, Mayor, following direction from the council on February 18th, a language proposal, initial draft, was brought to the planning commission on March 12th and discussed by the planning commission regarding body art studios and permanent cosmetics. Following the discussion of the planning commission and the review during that meeting, staff was asked to research other zoning codes of municipalities within Davis County, which we did. We polled seven communities in Davis County and provided that research to the planning commission on their April 9th meeting. They reviewed that information, wanted more time to allow other planning commissioners that were not present to have access to that information. So we brought that same information forward on April 23rd to the additional planning commissioners so that all the planning commissioners could have awareness of that information. During that, we did find evidence of two communities that did have body art, studio body art facility languages and permanent cosmetics being doubtful in Leighton. The other five cities that we polled didn't seem to have evidence of any code language for tattoo that was allowed in those communities. And that summary is found in your packet if you're curious where they are, and then the links are provided as well if you want that survey. Following the research and the discussion of that and further discussion regarding the previous ordinance document that Lisa had prepared for our meeting back in February, the planning commission started to debate the language that was in the packet and submitted with that evidence from the other communities. And we brought the new, I guess you'd say, the discussion material back to the planning commission, just doing their guidance and commentary on May 14th. One point that was noted was that with permanent cosmetics, there was quite a bit of discussion about the Leighton City permanent cosmetics ordinance. They felt like there were, there were planning commissioners that felt very strongly that they liked that language, and asked staff to do amalgamation of our current city code as well as Latence to come up with a new definition. And so that's what you see in your package as well, there's a document that shows Latence says permanent cosmetics, Centerville's permanent cosmetics, and then a mixture of the two. And that's what the planning commission recommended for that. A key point that they did recommend on that May 14th meeting as well is a pure separation out of personal care services and permanent cosmetics, making permanent cosmetics its own designation and definition within the code, and then lightening up, I guess you'd say, or altering personal care service so that it no longer alludes to permanent cosmetics as part of that definition. At the conclusion of that discussion on May 14th, they did plan to set the public hearing for the May 28th Planning Commission meeting, and that Planning Commission meeting, or that public hearing was advertised accordingly. It was held, and there were not very members, if any at all, that I can recall in attendance at that meeting nor any written commentary prior to that meeting. So that's something that is factual, you can watch the meeting and see that. At the conclusion of that meeting, they did make a recommendation to city council with some alterations, even up to that very day, they made some alterations. And so the recommendation that was sent to the city council with a five to zero vote of the planning commissioners on the 28th included changes to the definition for body art facilities, a basically new definition, that altered a definition for permanent cosmetics and that separation out of personal care service, the light changes to the definition of personal care service, and then the removal of the tattoo establishment definition. Additionally, they recommended a change to the table of uses, which is found in your packet, where they included body art facilities as conditional uses in the identified potential zones of all the industrial zoning. They added the permanent cosmetics permitted use in the commercial zones and the industrial zones, and then obviously they removed the tattoo establishment line from the table of uses for commercial uses. Further, per direction from our city attorney, there was the inclusion of new C Z C 12 dot five five dot two six zero, which talks about regulation and administration of body art facilities and permanent cosmetics as guided by the Davis County Department of Health. And then Articles 4 and 5 that were changed were home occupation linkages that no longer were necessary due to, again, that separation of permanent cosmetics and body art facilities. So ultimately, that, those changes are what are found in ordinance number 2025 dash zero seven in your packet. They do match up with what the planning commission recommended to the city council for favorable approval. And the findings for the planning commission's decision on May 28th informing that to you are the same findings that you'll see in your packet under approved tonight, that those match identically to the findings that the planning commission made that evening. And so with that, that's basically long and short, I just will note, like I said, the planning commission staff report is found in your packet following the ordinance, that table of uses update is found thereafter, the permanent cosmetics definitional change is found thereafter, and then the, the research key is found thereafter, and then you can see that the public hearing notices that were provided or found at the bottom of that document. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have, and I'm open for any questions or comments or directives from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that, I'll read you, Mike. Council, have any questions for Mike before we go to the public hearing matter?
Mike, I have a clarification that I just wanted to indicate with regard to your staff report. I always appreciate you guys putting these together. In the background section of your staff report, you indicate that the city council noted throughout their deliberations that there wasn't necessarily a concern with the idea of establishing a zoning area to allow for a tattoo establishment body art facility somewhere that makes the most sense within the city, but the applicant's requested location would not be best suited for consideration of this proposed use. I just wanted to clarify that that was not the entire city council, there were, in fact, members, myself included, who believed that that requested location would be best suited for consideration of the proposed.
That's a fair clarification that I recall as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike right now? Okay, I'm sure there could be more after the public hearing. So this is a public hearing matter, like I said, it's a public hearing resulting regarding zoning code text amendment, body art facilities and permanent cosmetics. I would ask if you're so inclined to comment that you do tell us once again your name and where you're from for the record, and try and keep your comments brief, and try and keep them on point succinct. This is, this is a discussion about where we zone for this type of use within our city and, and not about, about the industry, it's just about zoning. That's what we do, we have housing, we have plumbing companies, we have body art, we have attorneys, we have et cetera, et cetera, and so that's what we're discussing, just how to zone within our city. So with that said, the public hearing is now open for zoning code text amendment, body art facilities and permanent cosmetics.
Good evening. My name is Abby Cook. I am a staff attorney at the ACLU of Utah, here to speak about the constitutional considerations for tattoos in Centerville and the zoning code text amendments currently before the council. I want to sincerely thank the council and the planning commission for being thoughtful about this issue. I know it's been going on since the fall, and I know that going forward, you will do your best to protect your constituents' First Amendment rights to free speech. You've already read my letter. I won't belabor my point, but I am here to underscore that this is not just a zoning issue, there are serious First Amendment concerns when you restrict the practice of tattooing in Centerville. Both tattoos themselves, the art of tattooing, and the business of tattooing have all been found to be First Amendment protected activity. I don't have any tattoos, this isn't a personal fight here for me, but infringement on First Amendment rights impacts everyone in our democracy, and even if this violation is limited to Centerville zoning code, it is a really big deal, and the ACLU is here to talk about it. As public officials and stewards of the community, it is essential that our local laws and policies reflect the values of the Constitution. We must ensure that limitations on speech, however well-intentioned, do not run afoul of the Constitution. Importantly, that means that this governing, governing body cannot restrict speech simply because it is unpopular or controversial. Public animosity or discomfort with certain forms of expression, including tattoos, is not a lawful basis for censorship, nor are financial or oversight concerns sufficient to pass constitutional muster. I tell you this as a civil rights attorney and as a Utahan who values the role of the Constitution in our communities. I urge you to consult your legal counsel and review cases about tattooing and the First Amendment. You are not the first city council to address this issue, other cities have had these exact concerns, and I will tell you that courts have found and protected free speech in tattooing every single time. The First Amendment protects all, whether they have tattoos or not, and today I urge you to protect those free speech rights of your constituents. Let them tattoo, let them get tattoos, and let them open tattoo studios in Centerville. First Amendment promises and demands nothing less. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Abby. Nothing? Everybody must have come for, hear the minutes at the end of the meeting or something. Thank you. I will close the public hearing then, if there's nothing else, and we can come back to...
That's it!
We can come back to, if there's any questions, further questions for staff from Council off.
We're just going to see if there's somebody online that wanted to speak.
There is a JT online. Did you want to share a comment, JT?
Yeah, I apologize for my outburst, I didn't know everybody could hear me.
Okay, did you want to share a comment or no?
Yes, I'm not a resident of Centerville, but I have been following the situation for the last few months. I'm sure all the arguments have already been made, I just want to add my voice to it. I, myself, am not fully educated on the zoning, and I know everyone's saying this is a zoning issue, but I also want to voice my opinion that, that there are other factors that play into the zoning. It sounds like Nicole's already been there, and a lot of people didn't notice before this was an issue that was presented before the city council. I fully support her continuing her business there. I've also heard arguments in the last city council meeting that it is a zoning issue, but I've found that everyone who made the comment that it was a zoning issue were fearful that in the future tattoo parlor shops would be opened after this. And so it almost seems like, on the surface, it's a zoning issue, but the fear is that something bigger will come in the future, and so it goes right back to people having problems with having a tattoo in the city. I know I'm not a resident of Centerville, I would like to move in a wonderful city like Centerville in the future, but I become hesitant because I'm worried that, you know, me with my cultural background might not be as accepted by the residents of Centerville. I feel like when I come through Centerville, I feel my skin a lot more. I know you can't see me, those who are present, but I am of a Samoan heritage, I'm really a dark-skinned Samoan guy, and I fear that if I were ever to come into a city or a place like Centerville that I might not be as welcomed. I know not everyone is like that, but, but I see comments, I know that Nicole has gotten a lot of hate in her private messages, and I wonder, and I fear that that future, you know, might be considered in the, and so I just wanted to voice my opinion, thank you for giving me the opportunity online.
Thank you. Public hearing was closed, but we did allow comments because he was trying to get in. So, all right, moving on then, we thank you for the, we thank you for the comments, for the two comments that were made. I think it's important to reiterate what Mike Aggett brought up and what I brought up as well, too. Centerville has been looking at this issue, in fact, we are only one of a handful of cities that are addressing this issue, so we're trying to make it work with, for the industry and zone it within our city. We have permanent cosmetics right now, there's many issues in cities that don't even have that, so it's just a matter of, you know, what, where we establish zoning for body art. So that's what the planning commission worked on for five different meetings, and I re-watched all five of those meetings earlier today, and unfortunately, there was only one person at the very first meeting. We didn't have any other people show up for to guide in the planning commission's efforts on that. So just, just for the future, so people know, there's a planning commission, there's a city council, and that's what's great about our process and government, is you have an opportunity to give input all along the way, and so council's operating off the hard work of what the planning commission did, and also off of what staff did as well, too, since we hadn't had any public input other than in February and November when we had it, but in trying to draft our ordinance and make zoning for body art, we haven't really had much with any public input. So we're doing our best in that regard. So, Council, do you have further questions for staff?
Not in light of my understanding that we're planning to table this without further discussion, no.
Yeah, so if we don't have any questions, do we have a motion then to table it for
I'll make a motion to table the proposed zoning code text amendments to Centerville zoning code 12 point 12 point 040 regarding definitions, amending Centerville zoning code 12 point 36 point 040 regarding table of uses for commercial uses, adding a new section to the Centerville zoning code as 12 point 55 point 260, body art facilities and permanent cosmetics, and other associated amendments as located in Centerville zoning code 12 point 62 point 040 and 12 point 62 point 060 as presented by city staff and the city attorney until such time as the staff needs to be determined.
Just waiting for a second.
Second?
Second. Yes, and if part of that is directing staff to research some of these legal issues that have been raised, I think we acknowledge that this is not only a zoning issue but a free speech issue, we certainly recognize that, so just to explain a little bit further about the tabling to give us some opportunity to review those issues.
It did include that.
Okay. Motion is second, further discussion? Councilman Meacham, let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes four to one. Thank you. So we will proceed accordingly, and to give staff an opportunity to pull more information together for us, so. Okay, let's move on. The next item on our agenda is bond reduction. Summerhill Lane subdivision yard drains. So let's have, who's addressing that? Mike Carlson? Kevin Campbell have down, but I don't see him here, do you?
I'm happy to speak to that, Mayor.
Or maybe Lisa has a mic, it sounds like.
Yeah, this is just a remaining bond for the Summerhill Lane for the land drains, and they've completed those land drains, and so the city engineer is recommending that you release the remaining bond amount, and no warranty is required for this. We typically have a 12-month warranty, but no warranty is required because these are private improvements that we just required the bond for. So that's the recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we approve bond reduction number one, final, with no warranty required for Summerhill Lane subdivision drain line bond in the amount of $64,900.
Second?
Motion is second. Councilman Summerhays, going to the right.
Aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously, thank you. All right, let's go to minutes approval. We have a June 17th work session, we have a June 17th city council, we have a June 17th closed city council, and we have a June 25th special city council minutes. Do you have any changes on those minutes? If not, a motion to approve.
It's all moved.
Cut a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. All right, let's go to council report. Councilmember Plummer?
That's me. Wonderful, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that every time I go to these meetings, I'm very impressed with the people that volunteer their time and energy to them, they're so important. The people on the tree board have done amazing work over the last few months with the Arbor Day celebration, the art contest that was held. It was a lot of work, and the people that were involved did a tremendous job, and it really did bring a lot of those, the community together behind trees, we had a lot of applicant or submissions for the art contest, it was really a great product that they had, that they put forward. Heather Taylor is now the new chairperson for the board, and she has been actively looking for new members, they're short, they would like to have a seven member, and they're short on that, so if we have any people out there that would love, that would like to be on the tree and conservation board, we welcome any applications for those spots. Members on the committee or the tree board right now, the tree and conservation board, I do like to say the whole name because I think conservation often gets forgotten in that whole part of the tree and conservation board, but there's a... But, uh, the, there's a lot of new blood on the board and, uh, Heather went around, uh, the last meeting and just asked people their, um, priorities as they, uh, look forward in the future as to what that, uh, tree board and tree and conservation board might do. Some of the ideas were monitoring tree inventory and making sure that the tree, uh, that there are no, uh, there's not a tree deficit in the city. Um, there's a couple of board members that are really wanting to, uh, help and lead, uh, the public in education for what trees work in certain areas and how, uh, planting them in, in certain areas will benefit the tree's health and, uh, longevity. Uh, we do have a member that would love to, uh, be a point or liaison for outreach to you, excuse me, USU and how they, uh, and Utah State and how they can help support us in, in that conservation effort. Um, priority from one of the members was, uh, tree care in city parks. Uh, that's seen as a, a priority. And, um, just, uh, taking, we have the, the moniker Tree City USA, uh, and what goes into that, I think that was, uh, seen as a priority as well. And the, uh, criteria for that would be maintaining a functioning tree board, uh, the city taking on a legal responsibility for trees on city property, clear ownership and care guidelines, and a formal public tree care ordinance. And I think that Heather is doing a great job. She's, uh, really focusing in on this and she's going to have some good, uh, of information as we go forward in what we might do for supporting that, uh, moniker Tree City USA. Um, moving on, and so there's going to be a lot of things, and, uh, our last meeting was, uh, more of a planning session for the next six to eight months. And, uh, they are going to be looking at some different, um, ways to celebrate Arbor Day. Uh, the art contest was a success, but it was a lot of work. And so they are looking at, uh, some alternatives to the art contest. Uh, so that is something that they'll be, uh, working on over the next few months. Uh, the center, or the citizens' core council, which has been very busy lately, they've, uh, conducted trainings, they've conducted, uh, some, uh, they are working on emergency warning system planning. Uh, Kelly Sharp has done a great job in, uh, giving a lot of guidance to the, uh, council and, uh, has helped the council understand his walkthroughs, which is a step-by-step process to test and teach procedures. And I think that's something that I've been very, uh, interested in. It's a, a great, uh, education for me and I think a lot of the people on the council in going through that walkthrough and, uh, then an after-action review, which is, uh, basically, uh, reviewing that, um, training initiative or emergency, uh, preparedness situation that, uh, they just conducted. Uh, so, right now, uh, key priority is to keep, or is, uh, developing local emergency warning system for events like strong winds. Um, they, the goal is to clear, clearly and timely provide that information, uh, make it consistent in the messaging and, uh, make sure that even, make sure that that messaging is consistent even when emergency staff are unavailable. These are all things that they're, the council is working through. Uh, and, you know, we actually did see, I did see in the, um, in the city manager's report just last week that additionally Chief Ackerson, Louisa, the city manager, and Kelly Sharp met and are collaborating to revamp the CCC to an official city committee, uh, to strengthen its role, formalize the structure, and improve coordination across departments. And, uh, excuse, bless you. And if you have anything further to add to that...
This is on my report, too, for sure.
I would actually defer to you on that, uh, information. So, uh, that would be all, mayor.
That was on my report.
Good report. Thank you, Councilman Plummer. Any questions for Councilman Plummer? Anything pressing with, uh, we need to know from any of you on your committees? Um, okay, mayor report. First off, uh, cog meeting, uh, two weeks ago, it was the day after we had our city council. We had our, uh, monthly cog meeting with the other mayors and county commissioners. And, uh, one of the reports there was, uh, the loan fund for Davis County business. Uh, this continues to grow. We've, uh, made some, uh, connection with the state with some funds that are available there. Uh, if you know anybody with a Davis County-based business, uh, I know I said this before, but, uh, uh, have them, uh, get ahold of myself or another member of the loan fund or Alex Leonardi with the county, um, uh, for their applications, uh, for any businesses that they may have going. It's, uh, a good program. Uh, I'm on the board, we meet monthly to, uh, look at those loans. Um, we're heavy in restaurants, so, uh, not that we wouldn't entertain restaurants, but, uh, uh, we, we, we would like to get some different industries as well, too. So, uh, so that's, make that available to, to your, to the people you know. Uh, Wasatch Integrated Waste Management, uh, Preston Lee's first day today was the new executive director. He took over July 1st with Nathan Rich's retirement on June 30th. And, uh, he's, uh, I've been working closely with him being the chair of, of Wasatch Integrated this, this year, and, um, he's excited and, uh, ready to move forward. Um, uh, we have Curtis Koch, Koch, Coke, is Coke, leaving the county, uh, taking another opportunity. Uh, Curtis has been with the county a long time. He's, uh, he was in dual roles, but then the roles were split off to where he's like controller now. Um, Curtis is very solid, very strong. I've, uh, consulted with Curtis on a couple occasions. I'm actually going to go meet with him in a week or two, uh, just before he leaves, uh, to catch up with everything on the county budget. He, he gets amazed that, uh, not more people ask him about the county budget, uh, and, and the goings on, on there. So, um, I, I hope to, uh, be even more informed after getting together with Curtis. Uh, Curtis has, uh, done a great service to the, to the county. Um, the Fourth of July is coming up, uh, two days from now. You got, uh, the pickleball courts, you got the children's fair, you got the, the parade the next day with the 5K and the mile run, and then all the festivities on Saturday with the child's parade. And, uh, I think there's still, uh, spots available if anybody wants to get dunked, uh, to sign up for the dunk tank. Chief, chief has, and I'm just looking for my spot.
I'm at noon.
As well, too. Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah, Councilman Summerhaze as well, too.
Could be a big group.
Yeah.
I will sign up as well. I don't know if anyone will think it's that fun to dunk, you know? I can think of people that would be more interesting, but...
There's other volunteer positions as well, too. That's just, uh, there's, there's many other volunteer positions to sign up for if you, if you want to help. Um, uh, so we're all excited for that. Uh, anything, I've gone to the last, uh, two of the last three meetings, uh, with the Fourth of July committee, and, uh, pretty organized. I think they're ready to go. It's just hopefully it goes off okay. Uh, then the last thing is that, uh, I went on the watershed tour again that I'd done two years ago. Uh, and, um, uh, it was very similar toward it two years ago, but it was well worth doing again. Uh, one thing I did at the end, which I didn't do last year is, 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 uh, a lot of people take off and the buses get back, but I stayed and did the tour of the facility there to see the various stages, almost look like fish hatcheries of, of, uh, where they process the water and clean the water. Uh, and then, uh, of course, they have their garden up there as well, too, that if you want any gardening ideas, uh, for, uh, low-impact water usage, uh, that, uh, you can go up there, uh, and they have them growing right there for you. They're, they got an experiment going on right now with Bermuda grass, and they, they said they'd get back to them on that. Says they only, they've been growing it for a few weeks. Grass that would only need watering once every seven days, uh, seven to 10 days, uh, versus almost every day with Kentucky bluegrass. Now, one thing I did notice from this is that, and I'm not saying it's because of me, I'm saying, uh, it's because of pushback, as I think, from a lot of people. But two weeks ago, uh, two years ago, it was all about conservation in that meeting at 7:30, and the whole tour was about conservation. I pulled Scott Paxman aside a couple of times. I says, "What about additional resources? The, the way that we're growing, we haven't had a new dam put in." You've heard this spill from me before and how I had the other mayor sign a letter and everything else. And, uh, so they did talk up about, uh, talk about potential additional resources, about, about the Bear, the Bear River drainage. And it made me start thinking about, uh, how we can make an impact to citizens, you know, because of, of many people, uh, they're saying, "Hey, we, we need to talk resources as well as just conservation as well, too." Um, I remember when I was first mayor, uh, in the first year, going to Chief Child and joking around with him and saying, "Chief, uh, since I've become mayor, uh, I always tried to be a good citizen before, but now when I come home late night during tax season, I don't go up Parish, uh, Parish Lane as fast as I used to." You know, uh, I thought nobody was out, I just tried, tried needing to get home because I need to obey the law, you know? And I think, uh, uh, this watershed tour made me think that as well, too. Two years ago, I got a call late in the season from a resident saying, "How come, uh, we've been saving our water all year, we're down in Utah County, they're, they're not under any restrictions." You know, I, I learned the reason why because of the agreement a hundred-plus years ago of, uh, where they get to take money from the Weber, uh, water from the Weber River. And, and I know we talk about water rights and so, how hard they are to change, but you know what? That's the beauty of our system is that you can change. But in the meantime, before laws are changed, I think it's, uh, important that we obey those laws, no matter how big or how small, small those laws are, especially as, as council members, uh, as, as examples to the community. Uh, I think of myself, uh, it just doesn't put the police in a good position if, if, uh, uh, I'm speeding and they pull me over. I mean, uh, we're, none of us are above the law even, no, no matter how big or small that law is, and we, we must obey it. And, uh, even the littlest of laws, we, we, we should be obeying. And I know we're not perfect, but, uh, those that we know about, we, we, we should follow and obey it. And if we don't like them, then you go about, uh, getting some changes done, like, uh, like I was talking about with the, the water resources. So, that's just something I was going to use in my opening message, but, uh, I thought, uh, then you, that I, that I could sit, I could save it until now, but, uh, so, so call me on it if you ever see me not obeying the law, and I'll do the same with all of you, that, uh, we need to do, be the best example we can to our residents and community. So, um, I think that's all I have, plus anybody has any questions for me. All right, Brent, city manager report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, just have a few items. One is Happy July 1st, it's the beginning of our new fiscal year budget, where Nate's not here, he would celebrate with you and have cake or something, I don't know. But anyway, it's, it's great to actually get to this process and now we get to implement the budget we just passed. Appreciate all your help on that. The second thing is the citizen court council, uh, yes, chief, Louisa, myself, had a great conversation with Kelly. Ultimately, the, the citizen court council from years ago with Gatsby 84, we had some of these kind of quasi-commissions in the city that we didn't really formalize. And the citizen court council is one of those where they offer advice and guidance to how to spend some budgetary money regarding emergency management. So, they're not part of the city, but they give, you know, some, uh, influence on how we spend our money at that level. It's not very much, I mean, we're talking $500 in the emergency management budget, but they do a lot in our city. And really, it came to a point where we need to figure out and formalize it or move on from them. And so, uh, luckily, we have Kelly, who's amazing and has some great ideas. So, ultimately, during that conversation, just trying to help understand ideas of how this committee could look like, direction they go, board members, how do you, you know, how do you go about this? And, and the direction that, that I gave is go back to your council and start having the conversation of what you want it to look like and, and so we can present this to council of what your former board looks like. Before, the board was made up of, um, you know, members or committee, board members who were appointed by their stakes, um, of the predominant faith here. And, and there's some level of, do they really want to be emergency management? Is that just an assignment? Do they really have that same level of passion and care? I'm not questioning necessarily, but once assignment versus something you want to do, there, there is different approach. So, we have a lot of good old former, uh, members of the, uh, citizen court council that want to be involved in it and they're passionate about it. What, what I've learned about, and I think chief can agree, is what you learn about emergency management is we can be effective and very good at it, but there's just that extra level of passion you have to have to be really good at, which Paul Child had, right? Um, so having those passionate members is, I think, more critical than, than just finding assignments. Um, again, not dismissing the involvement because it's huge, uh, but I think we can have a different approach where you as a council also get to start selecting those board members and appointing them, where the mayor would appoint all the board members with advice and consent from the council. So, um, really, there's an opportunity to kind of change it up and really make it stronger than, than it's ever been. So, and, and eliminating the boundaries and saying, "It's all Centerville City." There's some complications that I've learned that, that West Bountiful oversees potentially some of our residents on the west side for emergency management purposes because of how boundaries are written. And it's like, well, well, they're still our responsibility, so we need to make sure that we are, are fully taking care of our people. So, a great conversation, um, with that. I really appreciate it. Kelly's going to be great. Um, second thing is also related to police is the gun range. Uh, chief has really been the point of contact now with Val, which I think has been good. They, one of the most important things is we had a little bit of a, a mix-up or a miscommunication. And the coolest thing was, is we're talking to each other now. And before it was, we'd get frustrated and we'd just simmer and get angry about it, and they would get angry about it, and then we, there'd be misunderstandings. But it was really cool to see this dialogue between the two, saying, "Hey, well, we thought this was happening, well, we thought this was happening." That's, that's what we need, and that's what we have now, so...
Val's been a breath of fresh air.
Yeah, Val's been awesome, and he's holding people accountable for, um, just issues that shouldn't be happening up there. So, Val's been great and, and a tenant to the need, so. Anything to add to that, chief? We're good there?
I think that why I would add, Brent, is that they did a, a large service day on Saturday. I was actually out for a bike ride and saw some of the going on, and they did a lot of work, like, a lot of work.
It's really great. They, they changed all the keys out?
Removed a bunch of garbage, brought in some kind of asphalt field material down by the gate. They've been working to smooth out the road, drainage issues, so...
Yeah, you, you brought up changing the keys, which is going to be a, a stream of revenue for them, which they have not had, right? They've had the lifetime membership, so now they, they do, they will have some money to work with, to do.
And they'll change it up once a year. So, it's part of your dues now that instead of just these keys floating around and we don't know where they are, they will actually get new keys once a year. At least that's their plan, which, again, would be super helpful because honestly, they had members who weren't members who were using the range and, and that could be problematic. So, anyway, much better situation. I feel it's, it's going really well, so, anyway.
So, yeah, next stop is the, a new lease.
A new lease. They've made the investment, hoping, they didn't want to delay this, this key change any further, so they've made the significant investment to change the keys with the hope that the lease will be renewed, so. Anyway, thanks, chief, appreciate it. And that's all I have, unless there's questions for me. Thanks, mayor.
Uh, I don't think there's anything, uh, any other closed sessions. Is there?
We can, if you want, what do you want to talk about?
Uh, so, everybody, uh, everybody's participating in the parade, right?
Yes.
So, remember, uh, Thursday, Thursday, Friday morning, Friday morning, and we look forward to that. Anything else from council that I missed? Anything staff that I missed?
You may still want to go get more candy. I, staff may not have been perusing the candy as it sits there in the hallway.
We're going to miss it.
All the taffy, all the good taffy's gone, I'm sorry.
You left all the yellows.
Well, we have time to make a Costco run.
But honestly, when you look at the candy, I know some of you, it's not enough candy for you. So-
The problem is somebody that rides with me has big hands, and he's really generous.
But we had more than we had, even with what we bought extra last year, right?
You could go into the lobby and, or the-
But didn't we buy some extra last year?
May I have a gander, and then I'll knock you into Costco?
I did personally, but I apologize to the residents because I ate all the good candy.
What time are we needing to meet?
What time do you guys meet for free?
Yeah, what time do we need to be there?
There's packets.
Oh, okay.
Very good.
In our physical box.
In our email box or our physical box?
I was like, so refreshing, and it's not-
I better go get that.
Chief, do you have anything for your turn?
Great candy, the little balls, dum-dums without sticks on them.
Oh.
So, try not to hit people, but I, but I will say, please try and throw it out towards the crowd at their feet right there.
Thank you, Chief.
Really don't want kids running out into your cars. But we'll see you out there.
Thanks. What's your turn?